Hello everyone and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. We are joined by Kim Ming and founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin. Y'all say hello from Fargo.
Hello.
Hello.
So it's really great to have everyone here today. Thank you all for coming. Excited to share with you some really, really in-depth training today. If you are coming in right now and want to share a success, something great that's happened for you, your life, your business this week in the comments, let us know. Let's, let's spread some happy around here. Today, we're going to be talking about how you can effectively get in front of all of your members, and I mean all of them. And to do this in a way that is professional and that, and is effective, and it takes you very little time. So this is going to be a little bit of a deep dive into the use of our platform. But we do have Q and A time, of course, as always at the end. So let me hop over here. Let's see, we've got some chat coming in. Arkansas, Virginia, UK, New York. Hey, everybody. Tulsa, Michigan. Awesome to see you guys. What's up, Mississippi, Florida? Oh, I wish I was down there where it was warmer. Alright, so I'm gonna share and we're gonna get the ball rolling here. Alright. If I could. Alright, cool. So today, we're gonna talk about the right way, the best way to educate your members. How many of you guys here, just a quick show of hands, would say roughly 50% of more or more of your time is spent on member education or research for member education? Yeah, most of us. Well, we, we all know, and this is something that would have come out in the email that, that you got prior to joining this call, is that, you know, that, that specific activity is not really one that moves the needle in your business. It may be fulfilling to you. I know it certainly is for most of us here, but it's not something that actually helps you to grow. And so we're going to talk about today, how you can really plug people in with the resources that they need without it taking up all of your time, so that you can do more of what you need, whether that's your own research for your own stuff, or for, you know, actually doing the things that move the needle in your business. So today, we're going to talk about how to make sure all of your members have access to support and education. And this is beyond just personally enrolled. And if you're here today and you don't have a personally enrolled yet, understand, this is still for you, because if you have these systems and practices in place as you grow, you will not ever find yourself on the hamster wheel that puts you in management mode and keeps you from actually working on your business for growth. I'm gonna show you how you can do this when you aren't even an oily expert, right? If you are just getting started with Young Living, you don't know the products, and my gosh, if you've been with this company forever, you still probably don't know all the products, right? So how you can do this when you aren't an oily expert, and how you can educate your members in less than an hour per month, and the best way to connect effectively with your entire organization, again, beyond your personally enrolled. So if you came here today, even if these aren't questions that you came here looking to get answered, you can bring those questions, whatever ones that you have. If you need support, if you need something visually, you need us to hold your hand and walk you through something, put that in the Q and A and we can help you. There is time for this at the end of this call. Alright, so if you are using a Get Oiling Content Partner, you're gonna be really happy with today's, today's training. So who, just quick show of hands, who here is using a Get Oiling Content Partner for educational content? This could be Grow Workspace, this could be Modern Companion. Oh, look at all those hands. This could be Wild Customer Delight. Alright, cool. So like everybody, look at all those hands. Alright, so you're gonna love this, basically. And if, well, I'll show you in just a second, but the system will take you. What I'm gonna show you today, and, and I've got everything that'll just walk you through it. You can watch this video as a replay, print out a step-by-step, check it off as you go, all that kind of stuff. The system I'm gonna share with you today is gonna take you under an hour to set up, and it's going to take you less than an hour per month to keep running, right? If you can imagine being able to effectively communicate with all of your members, even the brand-new ones, and have them automatically plugged into the educational content that you're getting from a content provider in under an hour per month, how much more time would that give you to work on your business, like the stuff that actually grows your business? A lot, I'm sure. So if you want to see who our content providers are, learn more about them, and, and figure out if what they have is right for you and your voice and how you want to build, all you have to do is go to GetOiling.com and scroll down and you'll see our content providers. Alright, so have you ever wondered who should get what, right? Like, so if you are already using Get Oiling and you're uploading your contacts from the VO, and let's just say you've got a campaign that you have imported from Grow Workspace, or from Modern Companion, or from Wild Customer Delight, you ever wondered who should get what? Like, how do I pick who in my organization gets what? Like, is it just my personally enrolled? Can I, can I email all of them? Can I just text all of them if I have their number? See, when you're uploading from your VO, you're adding more than just your personally enrolled into your system. And for those of you who aren't familiar with Get Oiling, we have a contact manager where you can import your contacts directly from your Young Living virtual office. So when you are doing that upload, you are going to have your entire organization, not just your personals, but those who they have enrolled as well. So the bigger your team becomes, the more important it becomes that your contact list is segmented. Now, if you've got your contacts uploaded and you're kind of freaking out with, with me saying this and you don't have it already, don't worry. A lot of this is already done for you. So segmented basically means that your contacts are tagged. We segment by tagging contacts inside of our system. So it's really easy for you to access specific lists of people without having to scroll through all of your contacts and manually checking the ones that you want to select. So the, some of the specific criteria you can tag for, it's certainly unlimited in terms of what you can tag for, are things like members or product customers, leads from landing pages, folks who are on ER, people who have opted in to receive newsletter-type content from you, and builders. Now, a lot of these are actually already tagged for you when you upload from your VO. Things like whether or not someone is a member, whether or not someone is on VR, on ER, rather. Alright, so some of this is already done for you. And when you go to your Contacts Manager and you hit Filter, you can actually see what some of those options are that you can choose from. So why is it important that we, that we select specific tagged groups of people when we are sending emails or texts, especially if we're putting them onto educational campaigns that are going to send a lot of information to them? So I want to talk with you guys about something called permission-based marketing. So if you don't have specific permission to send marketing messages to individual people, you're technically spamming them. So like, if you have 120 contacts from your VO and you have personally enrolled maybe 20 of them, but you're sending or applying a broadcast campaign, text or email, to all 120 of them, the ones who didn't get, give you specific permission are technically receiving spam content, because spam content is something that people aren't asking for, right? So does that make sense? Now, don't, don't worry. If you've done this, it's, it's okay. We're gonna talk about how we can do better moving forward. But, but, but it's important for you to know that the best way to operate is with permission. And so I'm gonna show you how to get permission from everyone who wants to give it to you, anyone who wants support and education from you, and to make this very hands-off and very easy and systematized for you. So what happens if you, as a regular practice, send or, or apply campaigns? These, this can be text classes, these can be new member campaigns, whatever it is, when you apply these to people who didn't give you specific permission, and they ignore the message frequently. If, if lots of you send it to 100 people and, you know, and 80 of those didn't open the message or click anything, over time, that lack of engagement on what you're sending is, is going to trigger, this, this is gonna get into something that's a little too high-tech here, but to be fair, it's, it, it does things with the little robots and email servers that like sends your stuff to a spam or a promotions or other folder, so people don't actually see what you're sending, right? So they go undelivered, or they, or worse, they can wind up in the junk folder, or people could report your messages as spam, and that's just problematic. And when this happens, no one, even the ones who would be totally okay with receiving your messages, can actually see them. Okay, so it's really important to operate moving forward with permission-based practices. So it's also important, in this specific context, to be respectful of your downline leaders, right? These are people who may be providing some of the same info. Maybe they also have a Get Oiling account, and maybe they're also sending the same kind of information that you're getting from your content provider that you use. So you never know, and you don't want to step on any toes. So it's important to be mindful of that as well. So let's talk about permission-based marketing. First, do I have permission to email my entire downline organization? So technically, because these are people who are technically customers of your business, legally, structurally, because they're in your downline, technically, yes, you own the list that you have, right? From a legal perspective, but importantly, it's not the best way to go for the reasons I mentioned before. So how do we go about getting permission from everyone? And how do I know who I can send what to? Alright, so these are the best practices to follow for permission-based marketing. So what you want to do is use tags in your contact manager to designate who's who. Now, the way people can arrive in your contact manager as contacts comes of one of a couple, basically three different ways. One is you bulk, you bulk upload from the virtual office, right? And these, that's already going to designate for you that these are members. You'll be able to see that inside your contact manager, that these are people in your organization. You also have a downline tree viewer in your contact manager, so you can actually see, are they your personal enrolled frontline? And of course, you can open up those legs to see who's under which and choose who you're communicating with where that's concerned. And, and just to continue with that, so you have your VO, you have landing pages, as, as well as text-in opt-in campaigns that way, where people can arrive in your contact manager by choice, right? They did, if they performed an action that put them in your contact manager, alright, that's the second one. And then finally, you could add someone manually. Those first two will have tags included. The final one, you would have to manually apply the tags, such as prospect, or such as met at a vendor event, or something like that. You can have tags like that in your contact manager. And then, when it's time to get the right information out to the right people, filter your contacts. And there is a filter button when you go to your contact manager for the criteria that you're looking for prior to applying campaigns or broadcasting messages. So you're gonna filter for things like specific tags, like newsletter, or you're personally enrolled, for instance, which is something that you can do by searching. If, when you go to filter, you can actually search by enroller numbers, so that you are only touching on with campaigns or sending email broadcasts or text broadcasts out to your personals, if you wanted to do it that way. You can also tag your contacts when you're uploading them from the VO. So actually, when you are performing the act of uploading from the VO, which you should be doing once a week, more often, if you have a large organization that's growing rapidly. And then you can, you tag those contacts with landing pages. That is a self-tagging activity, and then you could do that manually, like I mentioned. Alright, so how do we use permission marketing? What we do here is we apply campaigns, or we send broadcasts out, that's an individual email or text, only to those people who have specifically opted in, which means they've said yes, they want to hear from you. And for those who have not already said yes, how do you get more people to say yes? You send invitations to personally enrolled and new organization members, so that they can say yes to future communication from you. And I'm gonna show you exactly how to do that today. And again, there's a principal step-by-step guide that's going to show you exactly how to do this. So if, if it feels overwhelming and you're like, whoa, whoa, slow down, understand, you're gonna have a recording of this, you're gonna have a step-by-step walkthrough and all that kind of good stuff, and we've made templates for you. So this is what this looks like. A landing page that offers newsletters tags, that, that offers newsletters will tag the people who want that content, okay? So what this would look like is you have a landing page in Get Oiling, and it says, "Sign up for my monthly content newsletters," okay? And when somebody puts their name and email and phone optionally in there, it's going to tag them with newsletter, with a tag newsletter, okay? And that will also, in this instance, because landing pages have campaigns attached, that will add them to this month's weekly content campaign, okay? So if you are using Wild Customer Delight, for instance, who creates, you know, like right now, there's a beautiful April campaign that's running. When you add that to this landing page, they're gonna start receiving the right message at the right time. This landing page, this "Get on my email list for member education" landing page should be shared widely. This is what you put into your Facebook groups, sorry about that. This is what you put into your Facebook groups. You put it in your email signature, you, you share it regularly to make sure that everyone who wants access to this stuff gets access to this stuff, alright? And then, at the first of the month, you're gonna, you're just gonna swap the campaign out on that landing page, right? So when you, again, using Wild Customer Delight as the example here, when Amanda gets you that new monthly bundle with the campaign, you're just gonna swap the April campaign for the May one on the first of May, and continue promoting the same landing page to your members, right? Pretty simple. Obviously, if you're visually, a visual learner, your head might be spinning. Don't worry, we're gonna show you. And then you add your tagged contacts to the new campaign. Again, I'm gonna show you what this looks like in just a minute. So what this means is that people who opted into your, your, your landing page, the one we're talking about here in April, are gonna have the tag newsletter. So in May, all new people are going to receive the newsletter who opt in, but all you have to do on the first is select your newsletter-tagged people in your, in your contact manager, and then apply the new campaign, the May campaign that you got from Wild Customer Delight, alright? Now, what about new members? What I've just shared with you is how you are able to broadcast this information out to those in your organization currently who want this information, right? What about the new people that may be coming in daily, weekly, monthly, right? Not everyone is going to see that specific landing page in time, right? Before the next month's campaign rolls around or whatever, right? So how do we make sure that everyone who's new doesn't fall through the cracks? Here's what this looks like. Importantly, we need to note, this is not the same as a new member campaign. We actually have pre-made new member campaigns inside of Get Oiling. That's something that you want to use for your personally enrolled only, unless you get asked, or you gives, you, you receive specific permission from others in your organization who are new members who want to receive that information. Alright, so this is how we work with new members, making sure that we have a system in place, so that all new members in your entire organization, no matter who signed them up, can know that they can receive information from you. What you do to, to achieve this is to upload from your virtual office only new members, once a week. Then, when you're doing that upload, you're tagging them with that day's date, and you'll remove the tag later just for housekeeping. It's not gonna hurt anything if you keep it. And then you invite them in an email campaign to opt in to the landing page for monthly education content. So don't worry, guys. We made this easy for you to follow and easy for you to do, because we have created a landing page template that you can use, that I'm gonna show you how to customize here in just a second. And then a new member invitation to education campaign, right? That's the one in that second step there. How do we let all of our new people know that we're here for them? You're going to plug them in, when you do that weekly VO upload, to a new member invitation campaign, which is really just two messages that says, "Hey, I'm here to help you go to this landing page and say yes, opt in if you want this information," right? And also, of course, a comprehensive step-by-step guide we've already made for you to set this up in less than an hour, manage it weekly, which would take you five to 10 minutes a week, and then manage it monthly, which is seriously, guys, it's like five minutes a month. It's apply a campaign to a tagged group of people and swap out the new campaign from the old one on a landing page. That's it. Alright, so grab the resource bundle below when you're watching this as a replay. For those of you who are here live, we can definitely pop that into the comments, or rather, just follow along, right? Just follow along and watch. Alright, so I'm gonna swap my share to my screen here. See if it'll let me do this. I don't think it, but yeah, desktop, okay. Okay, so what we're looking at here, right here, this is what the... Okay, here we go. Alright, so this is what you're going to see when you claim your resource bundle, right over here. This. Alright, so this resource bundle, when you're logged into your Get Oiling account, all you have to do is check this box and hit this button. And what it's going to do is it's going to upload a landing page and a campaign into your account, okay? And it's also gonna give you a principal guide, which is this guy right over here. And this is a full checklist, step-by-step of exactly how you're gonna pull this thing off, okay? One step at a time. So claim the bundle. And first, we're gonna go over to our landing page. Alright, so this one, it's called Newsletter Sign Up. So under Newsletter Sign Up, we're gonna click that there. You've got, on your first page of this guide, create a newsletter opt-in funnel. We are at step one, right here, guys, right over here. Under Page Settings, right here, you are going to, excuse me, you're gonna change the name of your landing page and the link path, alright? So call it "Sign up for my newsletter," call it whatever you want, okay? So that's step one. Step two, you're going to attach this month's campaign. So if you have already claimed the resource bundle for this month from your provider, then you're going to find that in this list. Now, I don't have it in here, because this is not subscribed to, this is a test account. So you're gonna apply that campaign right here. I'm using the tag newsletter. It's already filled in for you. If you want to keep things simple, don't change this, okay? That was step three. Now, right here, show a message after registration. This is step four. Make sure that's checked. And then, you don't have to change any of this at all, except your email address right here. Okay, so add your email address here, the one that is connected to your Get Oiling account. And then, we're, we're gonna tell them to do, what this says is to add my email address to your address book right now, so you don't miss a single email from me. Feel free to hit Reply anytime. I'm here to help you get the most out of your Young Living experience. Another thing you can do, if you don't see the message right away, check your junk folder. Now, I did add here, under two, next level, if you want to add them to, say, if you have like a Facebook group, guys, I'm right over here, next level, right here. If you want to add them to a private member vault in Get Oiling, or if you want to add them to a Facebook group, you can add a link right down here, after registration. Redirect visitor. If you've got, again, a member Facebook group, add the URL here, so they know that they can join that group. Or you can send them to the link to your vault. That's another option there. You don't have to do that. You can just have this redirect to your website. That's fine. It doesn't hurt anything. Alright. And that's it. So what we're gonna do here is hit Done, and then you can, let's see, then you can edit this to your liking. This is already done. It's already ready to go personalize this, right? So this can be your name or your team name, right up here, up top. You can change the background by going to Page Background here. You can change any of the text that you see here. You can change the text here. You should put your name here, and you should share some information about yourself or your team down here below, okay? Edit this to your liking. Doesn't have to be complicated. Now, all we have to do is hit Save. And then we're gonna hit View. And then finally, you want to test this out. Put in your name, put in your email, and let's just test this real quick. This is what it's gonna look like. There's a pop-up. Right, and it's gonna show up, and you're, they're gonna see exactly what you just saw here. Of course, you'll need to edit it for your information. Alright, so that's, that's what we needed to do with that. That was it. Pretty simple so far, right? Okay, now moving on to how to get your existing members right now onto this month's campaign. Alright, this is the second page of our guide here, to send this campaign to everyone. So right, if you haven't had a chance to get people onto a landing page yet, but you want to just send this campaign to your personals, if you, you know, it's the ninth right now, as I'm, as we're filming this, of April, and you really want them to get the messages from this April campaign, then what you can do really simply is go to Contacts Manage, and I'm right over here. If you don't have anybody that's tagged with newsletter yet, this is what you can do right now, but only do this once. So Contacts Manage, Filters, Tags is what we're doing. So we went to Contacts Manage, Filters is the button right here. If you already have a newsletter tag, then pull that up here, but that's not it. Well, we do have a newsletter tag here. It's because I just added it, alright, but nobody's on it, except for the one that just opted in. So what you would do every month is select those people, and then you would add a campaign, sorry, wrong, wrong link. Add a campaign follow-up planner tags, and then select this month's campaign, and then hit Apply. But absent that, and I'm gonna reset my filters here, absent that, what you can do, if you look over here, guys, in your, your Contacts Manager, there's a tree viewer. Now, yours is gonna actually have people underneath it. This is a test account. You can actually see who's who from this tree viewer. That's one thing you can do. But the easiest thing you can do under Filters is go to Enroller and/or Sponsor and type in that number, right? This would be Sponsor, actually, wouldn't it? So we would put in your sponsor number, your enroller number, Filter, and then now you have your personals, right? You're personally enrolled. And then you would go to Actions, right up here. You would add that Add Campaign, Follow-Up Plan, Vault or Tags. Select the campaign, pick this month's content campaign, hit Apply, okay? So finally, this is what you do every month, on the first of the month, around this landing page. So on the first of the month, all you have to do, once you have this thing set up, and by the way, to, to share this newsletter, this View button right here is what you're gonna use. That's the link that you go and you share in your groups and wherever you want to put it for people to sign up. But all you have to do is, on the first of the month, you go in to Newsletter Sign Up, right here, to this. Go to Page Settings, Swap the Campaign for this month's campaign, hit Done, hit Save. Your newsletter is good for the rest of this month. Do this on the first of every month. The second thing that you do on the first of every month is you go to Contacts Manage. You de-select, reselect, or sorry, reset your filters. You filter for your newsletter tag. You select, you add the campaign, add this month's campaign on the first, hit Apply. That is your level of maintenance on a monthly basis. Really simple, and all of that is right here. Every detail about all of this is right here in this guide. It's gonna show you exactly what to do, what to click, where to go, okay? Now, just to show you quickly what it means to keep this running and to get your new members, and I mean new members only, tagged, so that you can invite them to, to get your resources. The first thing that we want to do is edit the campaign that you received in the download, okay? So the campaign from that bundle. And so if we go to Campaigns here, under Contacts, we go to Settings, we go to Campaigns. This is going to be New Member Resources, okay? That's the name of it. You can change the name of it by going up here to Edit Campaign Details. Up to you. This currently, just as an example, it's called New Member Resources. You could keep it as, as that. You change this to your name. This is Jane L's account. Preferred Sending Medium, I put Email Preferred. You could do Email and Text, up to you, up to you. And then we're gonna go back up here to Edit Emails and Campaign. Alright, there are two messages in this campaign, two. That's it. We don't want to send a whole bunch of messages to somebody who might have no idea who we are, right? For the reasons that we shared earlier. So what we're gonna do is, on day zero, which is immediate, when you apply this campaign to your brand-new members, they're going to receive a message that says, "Hey, welcome to Young Living." And it says, "Hi," and this is a personalization tag. It's gonna show their name to them. "I'm so excited that you've joined this amazing community. I am, my name, and I'm here to help you get the most out of your Young Living experience." You can share a little bit about your story here, and this I've, I've put here, guys. Put some of your story here, so that they get to know you, right? When they first sign up, they don't know what a Young Living Gold is, or a, you know, an Executive, or a Silver, or Crown Diamond. Like, they, they don't know that stuff yet. So just be yourself, be human, and say, "I am someone who is upline of you in this company, and I just want to make sure that you know that if you need any support, I'm always here for you." That's it, you know, and you can share a little bit about your own story if you want, but make sure you keep it about them. Alright, so I've put together a newsletter that I'd love to send you, to help you navigate your oily journey and familiarize yourself with Young Living product lines. There is a whole universe of amazing products to explore, and our monthly newsletters are designed to help you discover the power of your oils with ease. You can keep this, okay, or you can change it. You're, you're, you decide. So you can get access to that newsletter by clicking right here. And this is where you are going to grab, from over here under Landing Pages, the link to that landing page that we just made, okay? You're going to really simply, guys, highlight this text, just like this. Click Insert Link and add the link to your landing page. Click Open a New Tab and hit Insert, okay? Okay, that's going to make this a clickable link so that when you email this to them, they're going to be able to get to that landing page. Okay, and obviously, remove this text. All right, it also says, I've also got a members-only community where you'll find support, inspiration, and how-tos to help you along your way. We'd love to see you there. You'll find info about this group when you sign up for the newsletter above. If you don't have a group like this, then you can omit this. Look forward to seeing you in the community. Be well and your name. That's it. Now, what you want to do here is, once you've got this made, I want to show you a really cool email marketing trick. All right, so we're going to copy all of this. Select all of that text and copy it. Got it? Okay, now we're going to go back to our campaign. Now, the next message they're going to receive is going to be four days after you apply this, right? So this is technically the first day because that is the day that they get it. One, two, three days later, four total. They're going to receive an additional information. Now, the reason why I've just copied all of that text is that we are going to make this campaign message appear like a reply, like a thread of conversation in someone's email inbox. If you've ever received a marketing email that had this RE in the front, you may have clicked it thinking that you were responding to someone who was already having a conversation with you. This is a trick you should use incredibly sparingly in your marketing, but it will increase your open rates when it's most critical. And what we're doing right here is really just kind of trying to make sure this information gets to the top of the pile, that it's not ignored and that these folks get the message that you're someone that's there to help them. And then there's no messages after this. Okay, so here's what we're going to do. We're going to click that message and we're going to edit it. Oops, so all this does is, you know, your essential oil resources, you can change this. But what we have here is, hey, person, contact first name, just wanted to make sure you saw the message below from the other day. I don't want to bug you with a bunch of emails you don't want to read. So if you'd like access to our exclusive community and oily newsletter, be sure to sign up for it here. And remember what we did in the last one, right? You're going to be embedding your landing page link there. Be well, your name. Okay, so what I did down here, and this is really cool. We're going to select the text that's here because it's obviously changed now. We are then going to delete it. We're going to paste in our message from the last one, which is this right here. Select that block of text. And there's this cool little thing you can do. And I think it's, is it the paragraph menu? Yeah, all right, so when you've got that text highlighted on this paragraph menu, quote, increase. And I am going to decrease the font size there. All right, so now, when they receive this, it's going to look like an email thread and they're going to be able to see and reference what you had sent them previously. Now, guys, if you want to skip the whole tricky part that I just shared with you, you really, you don't have to do it. All we're doing here in the second email is just making sure that they've actually had an opportunity to see this because this is the last thing you're going to send to them. Okay? And let's see, if I come back over here. Now, let's, since we've, we've got our campaign ready to go. Let me see, stay on page and save this. Sorry about that. Now that we've got our campaign ready to go, here's what the workflow looks like. If we go to contacts and manage, we're going to filter. Or rather, no, sorry, just kidding. We're talking about, this is our weekly thing that we do. So under contact settings, you're going to import from your VO, right? So go get your VO download, which we show you how to do that right here. You are going to pick a file. Let me see if I have one that I can use just as an example. Okay? You're going to say you have permission and you're going to start your import. And then what you're going to do, and this is the important part of this, you guys. And Greg, please chime in to let me know I'm doing this correctly. All right, you, you can autocorrect capitalization, which is something we talk about elsewhere because sometimes people come in with all caps names. But importantly, most importantly, only import new contacts. Only import new contacts. And add a tag. So this would be, since today is April 9th, new member 492020. Greg, is there anything else I should do here before we hit start import?
I don't think so. I mean, if you want to get into, you know, choosing which field, there's a checkbox below that that lets you do that, that are update, you know, it only updates some fields, but for the sake of this, I think importing new contacts is probably what you want. I mean, that just keeps existing contacts alone in case you've updated their phone number or whatever manually. It won't overwrite them.
Okay, so would it be, it'd be good to maybe just check that to be safe? Or no?
No, no, that's like if you want to, like, for example, if you would, if you have that box checked that you just checked there, what that would do is for that, for the third one there, the for existing contacts, only updated selected fields. What that'll do is let you choose which fields actually get updated for existing contacts. So like, if you've, if you know you've gone through and customized people's names and email addresses, for example, you don't want those replaced by what's in the VO, then you could uncheck those boxes.
Got it, got it. Okay, so you can absolutely, just for the purpose of this, because it is going to show their email address, their contact information that's associated with their Young Living account. Just do this. If you feel more advanced, obviously, if you have questions, send them our way. But you can just select this one, only import new contacts. Make sure that you add a tag for today. This is what you're going to do once a week. Do this on Sunday or Monday, or just pick a day. And every day, once a week, grab your VO file, bring it over here, select, you know, the fields you want to upload. Again, we have videos and walkthroughs that show you how to do this. But the most important thing you need to do, new member with a date, only import new contacts, and then start import. Now, obviously, this isn't a VO file, so I'm not going to continue with that, that flow there. But that's what we're doing, right? See, over here, shifting over to this side of my screen, we've uploaded our VO members. Contact settings, import, add tags, new member and the date. Only import new contacts. And now, once we've done this, we are going to filter in our contact manager for this tag. Okay? Just like you would otherwise filter for your newsletter tag. Now, we are going to filter for a tag that, to be fair, nobody in here has this. This would be new member 492020. Now, when you hit filter, it's going to show up for you because you just uploaded people and that exists. So what you would do, and I'll just use another tag just for the sake of keeping this simple. Let me see, we'll do that. We're going to filter for this. We're going to add the campaign. And what was that campaign called? This is new member resources. And we're going to hit apply. Okay? That message is the one that we've sent here. And let's see. That's it, yep, hit apply. And then the last thing that you want to do is to, if you want to do this, you don't have to. It's not going to hurt anything. But after we hit apply there, if you want to clean up that tag, meaning if you don't want, you know, all of your contacts to have some, you know, new member week of whatever tag attached to them, then all you have to do is reset your filters. Filter for a specific tag. So let's just see that, I'm going to do, going to do this mom's tag. I'm going to filter for this tag. And then add campaign, this one here, same thing that we've used to bulk apply campaigns. We're going to remove the tag and hit apply. So now that tag's not going to be on any contacts anymore. And that's it. Right, so I get it, little bit of a learning curve here. You'll be able to re-watch this video and to be able to follow along with this guide as you do it. But at the core of what we're talking about here, it's going to take you less than an hour to get that landing page set up just how you want it and for you to send out that, this month's campaign to your personal enrolled or to those who are already signed up to hear from you via newsletters. And then, of course, once a week, upload from your VO just the new people, add this tag and send out that simple campaign that invites them to get over to that landing page and opt-in for your resources. All right. I know, guys, this was a lot. But again, you have everything that you need to follow along. So from here on, if you have questions about this or anything else, we're open season for Q and A. This will be available as a, as a replay. And of course, you'll have that link for you to get those downloadable resources and the resources for your account. What have we got? Okay, let's see. Michelle, oh yeah, we got a lot. Yeah, Michelle said, do we have to do something special in order for the tree viewer to work? When I click my tree viewer, I get a wheel that says loading, but then nothing pops up.
Yeah, you do, actually. And I think I could, I think there's something, I'm a little search of a help library on this. But there's a few things that need to be lined up for that. So number one, you have to have your member number entered into the back office. So that's like, if you, well, this is probably best shown with a little demo. So maybe I'll pop that up here. I do have another demo account that actually does, where the tree viewer does work. So let me find that and see if I can find my magic share button here. And keep going with that. Okay, so first of all, you have to make sure that you have your member number entered in. So click your name over here. Or I'm sorry, that's not where it is. It's under customize my site is where your member number is. So that's where, you know, make sure you've got your number in there. And then the other thing you have to make sure is that your contacts have a sponsor, an enroller, and their own member number. So if there's somebody who's not showing up, well, here, if there's somebody who's not showing up, you want to make sure. So like these here, for example, they have no sponsor number, they have no enroller number, they have no member number. So like member number, sponsor, and enroller need to be filled out. Now, you don't have to worry about typing all those in because it's obviously a lot of numbers. If you import from the virtual office under contact settings, import, just make sure to follow this list of fields that you have to, you have to choose some fields when you're exporting from Young Living. But as long as you check all these, then your tree viewer should work as long as you have your member number entered in under customize my site. The other thing that has occasionally caused issues is you do have to have a contact for yourself in your contact manager. And again, this is created by the Young Living export as well. When you import it into GetOiling, it should automatically create it. Some people have gone and deleted it, but you do have to have that one for yourself in there. So that, that will connect the tree viewer. And then when it works, it should work. You know, it's only going to show you who's on the, on your team, but here's, you know, here's what that kind of would look like, I guess, so. If you have any questions, certainly email support. We can look at your account and your specifics and figure that out for you.
Cool. While we still have the screen sharing, Greg, Fay was asking, she said we should be uploading each week. When we do this, does it automatically update without making duplicates? What if someone goes inactive? Does it remove them from my contacts?
Yeah, great question. So the, as far as you're, you know, if you're uploading every week, it's going to, you know, when it comes from the Young Living virtual office, the file has member number. And so it looks them up by member number. If it doesn't find somebody by that member number, it will add a new contact. So it does deduplicate. If you happen to have a file that does not have member number, it does look them up by email address and attempt to deduplicate them that way. And there actually is a third setting, which is lesser used, but can potentially be useful if you know you've got unique email addresses. But on this next screen, there's a way also to deduplicate by mobile phone number. That's in addition to email address if your file, if your file does not have a member number. Now, the, the part you got to think about a little bit on that is there's some scenarios we've seen come up that I didn't anticipate, which is why we've kind of changed this over the years. So if you, there are people who sign up with Young Living with the same phone number. So this box sometimes can cause some issues with contacts appearing like they don't import. They can also sign up with the same email address. That was much less rare, but we have encountered that case before. So that's why when you import from Young Living, it uses the member number and not email address or phone or any of that. So it does deduplicate based on that. And as far as the inactive, it does not remove them from your contacts after they go inactive. Some people have a workflow where they will, like, before they go inactive, of course, in Young Living, there's a way, I think it'll, it pops up like every time you log in and it says about to go inactive. So you can click on that and you can export those. And when you're importing them, you could say, oh, you know, add an inactive tag. And then, or about to go inactive or whatever the case might be. And then, then you'll have that tag on there. And then you can kind of monitor that and maybe change it to inactive after they go inactive because they do disappear out of, out of Young Living, the virtual office after they're inactive. But if they do reactivate, that's where this handy little feature comes in, remove tags from imported contacts. If you're importing from the VO, you can choose your inactive tag if you know that you're importing from the VO. And then it will automatically clean off the inactive tag if somebody reactivates. So that's kind of a few workflows around that question. Hopefully that helps.
Awesome. All right, will our signature attach to the new member campaign? If you have a signature that is uploaded into, what, what section is that uploaded into, Greg?
The signature, the?
Yeah, yeah, like, like your signature that would go under any email, right? Like, that's?
Yep, the settings. Yep, contact settings and then general settings over here, then you can put in your signature.
And that's going to automatically attach to campaigns?
It does automatically attach to campaigns, yep.
Awesome. Mary was asking, what company did you say does campaigns? If you go to the getoiling.com homepage and scroll down, we have several content providers that you can purchase content from. And of course, we are always looking to grow that. If you are working with a content provider with another platform, we would certainly love to expand this so that we can serve you guys with lots of great content. So right down there that Greg is showing, that's where you can find our partners. All right, Meg, how can you delete one that is already being sent? Because apparently I tried to send it to someone who just got their kit and actually I sent the new member more than one time. So I think, Meg, what you might be referring to is a campaign. And I, you can't be on the campaign twice. Like, one contact can't be on the campaign two times.
Right, but if you add it again, it restarts it. So that might be what's going on. To remove, I mean, you can always check by coming in here and I'll pull up a contact that I know has a campaign on it. If you click their name and then scroll down to the campaign section, you'll see what campaigns that they're on and what day that they're on. And you can even click on them to see like what, what day goes with that, you know, what message goes with that day, I guess. Now, if you know it's just one person, you can just come in here, click on that and then click remove, and then they'll be taken off that campaign. But if you have a bunch of people, that's where the contact manager can come in. You can filter or even go all contacts. I don't know, I mean, it depends on how broad you want to go. I've seen people accidentally put this on everybody. Filter it down, go to actions, and then there's the sort of bulk actions option here. Add campaign, follow-up plan, blah, blah, blah. If you click remove up here next to campaign, you can choose the campaign and then hit apply and then it will go through and remove it from all those people. So in case you've done that, that's an escape hatch there.
Awesome, yeah, so the same way you would remove a tag that I was showing earlier, like Greg just said, that's exactly how you would also remove a campaign from someone. If you've sent a broadcast message out, you can't really put that back in the bag. It's like sending, we can't like, just like sending an email from a regular email address. You can't really unsend an email. So once that's gone, it's gone. If you made a mistake, then just send a, you know, oops, mistake email. Let them know and correct whatever information you need to. All right, so that one's done. All of my customers are overseas. Terry says, can you use WhatsApp for these campaigns? No, and for a couple of reasons. One, one is, I'm pretty sure WhatsApp is like not friendly to using those accounts for business. But what you can do with your WhatsApp messages, because everybody in the world can have email and no matter what anybody tells you, if there's something good that someone wants to see that's showing up in email, they'll go to their email. So what you can do is if you're contacting your overseas contacts, send them the link to the landing page so that they can opt-in and get those campaigns. It's going to save you a ton of time. It will streamline your business. And people who are serious are going to take the action that you prescribe to them. And people who are not serious are not people that you need to waste your time worrying about. That's a very red thing of me to say, I know, but you got to protect yourself, right? To be able to be of service to others. All right. Kathy, this is a question for the Gopher Gold student group. So definitely share that information in the group around your bat signal and, and ask for support in there. You're welcome to tag me. All right, Diana, so it's best to send to new members or the ones already in Gopher Gold. Okay, so Diana, what we're talking about today Okay, so Diana, what we're talking about today is if you are using Wild Customer Delight or Grow Workspace, right? Or another content provider who provides monthly education content. So basically, you get their bundle, you plug it into your Get Oiling, and now instead of you having to go out and source graphics and information and formatting and all this kind of stuff, you've got a series of five, six emails or something to that effect that are going to drip out over time automatically so that people get that beautiful, you know, informative information from you and you didn't have to make it, right? What we're talking about today is how you can send those ongoing education campaigns out to your people. And to do that on a rolling basis. So these are your people who were members five years ago or your people who were members five days ago. They're separate campaigns entirely. So for your new members, no matter whose new member of campaign you're using, if it's the one that we have built in, if you've modified your own, or if you've gotten one from a provider, you are going to add those personally to your personal enrolled. Apply those and let them know that you're doing it so that they can make sure they check their emails. And then, of course, for anyone who is new in your organization that maybe responds to you and says, hey, I'm kind of confused, I don't know where to start, you can offer to put them onto a new member campaign that walks them through it. Right? So they're two different things. People should absolutely be getting both. But the point of what we're talking about today is, is really making sure that you have permission first, before you just apply those messages and risk having your, your messages go to the junk box or not deliver. Okay? All right, can I re-import from the VO to add tags?
Yeah, you can definitely import. Again, if you'd like, if you bring in an import and you're like, whoops, I forgot the tag, you can just go back and re-import and the tag will be there.
Awesome. Michelle says, I'm new, where can I go to find steps to import the virtual office member contacts?
Awesome. So yeah, contact settings, click on the settings link here. There's a big import button, just click on that. And then you'll have some instructions right here. There's a link that pops open into the virtual office and it walks you through what you need to do. You have to click on my organization, click the advanced link, download. Make sure these fields are selected and then download the file and then choose that file and upload it here and hit the check mark. So. It's a pretty easy, once you get used to it, it's just like a few automatic clicks. It's like some, yeah, arm will start remembering it after a few months.
Awesome. All right, um, let's see, is there a way to delete multiple contacts? That's going to depend on the shared criteria, right?
Right now, this, I mean, a multiple contact deletes on our, on our wishlist. If you delete, the delete a specific contact, you can delete them one at a time with this little pencil icon or the edit, and then there's a delete down here.
But if you, if you need help with something that's a little more tedious than that, then reach out to us.
Yeah, definitely. We do bulk deletes, you know, people there like, whoops, I imported my file and now I've got 5,000 blank contacts. Can you help?
But it happens, right?
It does.
All right, Kathy, where do I find this replay? Do I need to sign up every week? No, this, uh, once you've signed up, if you're here live, you've signed up for this. If, you, you need to make sure that you are receiving our emails so that you'll get the link to join. We'll send you a, an off, a link to get onto this actual live call when you opt in. And that's it, weekly, get oiling.com/weeklyworksession. And then our uploads will go to our YouTube channel, get oiling.com, sorry, youtube.com/get oiling. Lots of links I'm talking about today. So the uploads of this, the replays are on our YouTube channel. And, and of course, once you've registered, you don't have to register again each week. All right, Diane says, I have some members and legs I don't want to add, some members I do want to add outside of my personally enrolled. How do I pull over all of these at the same time with the same tag? I mean, on your upload, you're uploading your entire organization and for, for really just smart business purposes moving forward. Because a lot of, a lot of folks, and you guys, maybe some of you have experienced this yourself, you know, might be enrolled by someone who quits the business tomorrow and they're, you know, just orphaned and they're not in contact with anybody. So when somebody first gets started, you want to take the opportunity, no matter where they are in your organization, for them to just get a quick email hello from you so that they know that you are someone who can support them. And if they don't want it, cool, you did your part, right? So you should be uploading your entire VO, but you should be segmenting and tagging based on who you want to be communicating with. Right? Send that quick new message out to anyone who's new in your organization. And then, you know, for your personal enrolled, and if you want to have people outside of your personal enrolls, what you want to do is just select your personals and then tag those additional people or select those additional people, you know, who are maybe under someone else, and then apply a tag to all of them. Or better, make it easier for you, share that landing page link so that they can tag themselves, right? All right. Um, see, Terry, I have several people in my downline who have remarried but didn't change their name in the VO. How do I keep their new name and Get Oiling and not download it to their old name?
Yeah, so that's actually the setting I was showing earlier. So let me just choose a file here. It's on the second page of the import. There's now a setting here that says for existing contacts, only update selected fields. So like if you've updated name, for example, you've gone through and you've manually changed people's names in the contact manager. When you import, you can check this box and just uncheck name, and it's never going to update then name on any existing contact. Now, if you add a new contact, if there's a new contact, of course, it's going to put their name in there, but it won't touch name then on existing contacts. So depending on what you're editing, you can choose, like if you're, you're keeping up on name and mobile phone or whatever, you know, you can make sure to exclude those or just name or just email. So, yeah.
Awesome, awesome. Let's see. Meg said, not sure if I sent the right campaign, use the new member US toward the bottom of the list. So when you, if you've added a campaign to someone, all you have to do is go to their contact file and you can see what campaigns they're on. And then, of course, you can, you can remove them from campaigns if you want to. Amanda just shared a great suggestion here in the comments for these sessions, you guys. Add it to your calendar every Thursday. The Zoom link doesn't change. So just add our Zoom link and, you know, put this on the calendar and you'll be able to just click when you get that notification every Thursday. All right, uh, to do, let's see, can we edit our own newsletter from a partner company? Yes, yes, you absolutely can. When it loads into your account, I believe it's already editable. It's our system messages that have to be duplicated to become editable, right?
Yep, yeah, they'll show under, for example, you know, most of these providers provide campaigns under contact settings, campaigns. You'd find them in the list, click it, and then you can click the message and then it will go through and you can edit it. It's just like it's yours then at that point. And a lot of them actually do come with instructions. So you want to look at it before you send it out because some of them will have like a little block of instructions that say, this is how you use this month's campaign or whatever. So you do want to edit them.
Perfect, perfect. Is there a way to download all inactives from all previous years to reach out to them? It's a great idea.
It would be, I wonder, Terry, if you're talking about through the virtual office? That I don't
Are you able to get an inactives list from the VO?
I don't remember offhand. I mean, I think some, I've heard that you can reach out to like Young Living and get a back listing of that. And I know there's like a way to go back to previous months and those might be, maybe they're still in there, I don't know. But, oh, Linda's saying here in the chat, no, you do have to email. So thanks.
Okay, yeah, you, you can get it though. I mean, that's, that's your, that's your genealogical list. It exists, it doesn't change. Like Young Living has that going back for as long as they've, you know, been around. So it's there, it's there. You just have to ask for it. All right, uh, let's see, how do I send a member a campaign? Diana, we covered this in the stuff just a little while ago, but just to, to remind you real quick, you would want to select the contact that you want to send it to. So you just go to that contact, um, just a single one or multiples, and you go to actions here that Greg is showing. And then add the campaign right there, and you get to select which, which campaign it is. And if you say, oops, it's the wrong one, all you have to do is use remove campaign and remove that campaign that you put on accidentally. All right. Mary says she's using Grow Workspace and Go For Gold. Awesome. Um, yeah, so I mean, with, with Grow Workspace, that is basically giving you everything that you need to educate your people without you having to be Professor Oils. And then, of course, Go For Gold, that teaches you every step that you need to follow to get new people into your business, right? So you've got one for maintenance and you've got one for growth. Pretty cool. All right, Meg, uh, I had commented on Facebook's student group, duh, duh, duh. Okay, don't be scared of this, guys. You, you get to make mistakes and like, nothing is going to like blow up or catch on fire or like destroy your check or anything like that if you make a mistake with sending people emails. I honestly, I, I think that, and this is in my own experience. You know, I am, for those of you on the color wheel personalities, if you understand those, I'm very blue naturally. Uh, and so I can just kind of get excited and make mistakes really easily and kind of clumsy. And so it's, I don't know, I, I find often that if you're just showing up authentically and being yourself, even when you goof, and even if you goof often, you're going to be forgiven for it, right? Nobody is, you know, nobody's watching over your shoulder and analyzing every single move you make and everything you put on your website. Like, nobody is as invested in how you're showing up in this way as you are. And, and that should give you a breath of fresh air because you're the only one that is scrutinizing yourself anywhere near as much, right? Like, nobody, nobody comes close to the scrutiny that we provide ourselves. So you're good, just, just follow the steps. You're going to fail forward. We all do. It's okay. And, you know, we're always here to help. Okay, can you import from two accounts? I have an account and so does hubby. Would it be easier to put them together for marketing purposes?
I mean, there's no reason you can't. And the only reason I can think of that you might need that is if you were like cross-lined at one point and you're merging two different teams. But if this is the case where you've enrolled your husband or vice versa, just import the one that's higher up on the tree and then that should automatically include his as well. But if they're totally cross-lined, I've seen that happen where two people meet up, they've both been building Young Living for five years, they get married, and now they've got like two completely different trees, then yeah, you can. You can totally do that.
Awesome. All right. Do you do a separate video on asking permission to send emails? I'm not getting much a response, of a response from the emails I'm sending out. So what we've covered here today, Kathy, is how you can, on an ongoing basis, invite people who are brand new to your organization with a simple two-email campaign that you receive in this resource bundle. So that's what you want to be doing every week with all of your new members. And then, aside from that, and, and really what you could do, just to start, if you want to just get permission by and large, is one time, send everybody that campaign of those couple of emails, right? If you want, if you don't have them all in a Facebook group, if you don't have any other way to, you know, to reach the people who are in your organization for them to see the landing page, if you're sharing it in a group or whatever, then just send that email out. Give them an opportunity to opt into the landing page and then moving forward, only email the tagged people. And, and what you'll find is, and, and I think that this is, this is an important thing to understand, if you're not getting responses from your emails and you're not emailing people who gave you permission specifically, I want to hear from you about these things, then there's a really high likelihood that those two things are very much related. People aren't going to just go and open and read through emails, no matter how nice they are, if they didn't have a specific reason or desire to want to get them. So if you are not happy with an open rate and people, you don't see people engaging, it could be because the permission wasn't there in the first place. So reach out. If you have a smaller list that you're working with, even better, reach out individually through whatever means you have to contact them and say, hey, I've just put together a resource, it'll just come to your email automatically every month with really pretty and informative information. Do you want me to add you to that? And then just go about it that way. Just rebuild your engagement from the ground up if you are, you know, if you don't have 6,000 people that you're dealing with here. Otherwise, leverage whatever resources that are visible to your people right now, if that's Facebook groups, whatever, and then give them the opportunity to opt in moving forward. Let's see, Diane says, I was asked not to contact one leg. So don't send marketing emails to that leg, but people in that leg have permission to hear from you. You know, if, if you, this is going to kind of get into tricky personal business stuff. If you have agreed with a downline leader that you will absolutely period, end of story, not contact anyone that is in their leg, then abide by what that agreement is, right? Obviously, have integrity first. But you also have a responsibility as a leader or an aspiring leader in this company to make sure that everyone who joins your organization, no matter who they're under, knows that they have support and access if they want it. Okay, so there's nothing wrong with you just saying, hey, you don't know me, but I'm here for you, I'm with Young Living too. You can choose to ignore this, or you can go over to this landing page and opt in for updates. Up to you. Have a great life, right? There's nothing wrong with you doing that. There's nothing at all wrong with you doing that and you have, I mean, you know, we're not going to get into a whole lot of legalese here, but I mean, if they're in your organization, in your genealogy, you own that list. So you, you could reach out to those people. It's not like there's anything legal that would keep you from being able to do that. So I'm going to leave that as a judgment call up to you. If you do have an agreement with someone in your downline, then obviously abide by that first. All right, is there a way to add the free sample request from Young Living share in an email to prospects?
Uh, yes, I believe there, I mean, now this is, I think, I know they have a, you know, what is it called, Wild Share or something like that, that where you can get a link that will, basically the web link that lets you, lets your visitor request a sample. And so, yeah, you can take that link, whatever it is, and then put it in an email, I believe. Some people have put it in their menu. I know if you go to, if you go to get only that kind, there's a little chat pop up in the corner, has a little video in it. Partway through that video, she actually demonstrates how she's put that link on her menu. So yeah, you can grab whatever that link is that you get from my share and put it in an email.
And, and you can, yeah, you can put that into a campaign as well so that it goes out to everyone. Yeah, absolutely. All right, we got some clarifications here from some very helpful people. If you go and you ask for your inactives, it's only going to give you personally enrolled. But if you want all of them, you just need to go back and do monthly reports. Thanks, guys. You are so helpful. All right, Diana, so once I add the campaign, will it show in my sent folder? If you go under contacts, messages here, you should be able, like you can see campaign messages set there, right?
The campaign messages, uh, they don't show there right now. There was, there was some confusion because only like day zero would show on there. So now they do show up, like if you go to a specific contact page and you look at their past actions, then you'll see, you know, if this is a camp, I think this is a campaign message right here, you'll see those in the given contact. If you want to see who's on a, on a given campaign, if you go to contact settings, this is, it's maybe not obvious because the numbers are small, but go to contact settings, campaigns. And if you look at the contacts column, these numbers are actually clickable. So you're like, oh, who did I send that to? And then you can like go in here, okay, which contacts got this? Then you can come and click through and see, well, okay, did they actually get the email or text or whatever?
Perfect. Diane is also asking, do I still import overall members? Yeah, totally. Yes, always update your VO entirely. But this is a separate VO update exercise just to make sure that you are getting that message out to the new people. So this doesn't replace your regular VO upload, which you should be doing weekly for sure, if not more often. All right, Meg says, when I want to just send a hey email, just to touch base and see how people are, can we just go and click on an email and then send a plain old email and does the email user email address that's linked to our good oiling site? So yes, yes, to all those things, actually.
Yep, you could just click on any of the email addresses that you see in the contact manager, pops up the box, type your message, send. And it'll come from whatever the email address is that you've got in Get Oiling.
And hey, if, if you have sort of a hey touch on somebody, kind of, you know, re-engage people email that you've sent before and that maybe you want to send again, you should consider making that a saved reply. So that all you have to do is just select the contacts that you want to retouch on and apply that saved campaign to them. Or saved reply, rather, which is just a single email.
Yeah, it's basically like an email template that you can drop in when you're creating an email. So yeah, when you're, when you click through, you just have it a name and then the rest is just like an email. It's got a subject and a body. I mean, you can use it for texting too. That's what these two sections are. But then when you're sending an email, like if I click on this name, here's your saved reply. You can just click that and poof, it pops it in there. So this is not the most exciting save reply, but you get the idea.
It was like nothing in it. Yeah, yeah. So this could simply be like, hey, and then add the customer, the, the personalization tag. So hey, person's first name, how have you been? Would love to catch up. You know, let me know when a good time is for you this week. And then like, that you could just call the saved reply, hey. And then you could just send a hey, you know, pick 10 contacts a week and send a hey to them so you can start a conversation. You could also, you do this with texts, do you save replies for texts?
Yeah, they do.
So that's, it's really cool, too.
Find somebody that's got a phone number, but yeah. Click on text and then here's your saved replies. These all work if they have a text message, yeah, right here, yep. It does, and it will, will pre-populate the images too, which is super nice. So if you've got a graphic to go with whatever that they, the hey checking in, if it's like a little hand wave or some graphic, yeah, saves a lot of time.
Let's see, so Carrie just added, I don't know about Grow Workspace, but Young Living customer, Wild Customer Delight usually has one of those in her weekly text campaign. Sometimes it's, hey, how are things? And sometimes it's, how can I pray for you? Modern Companion does this as well, who is another a content partner for Get Oiling. Those are really great, for sure. Definitely recommend any of our content providers for multiple reasons. We got some people popping in here and they use all of our content providers. Like I've got Grow Workspace and Go For Gold and Oil Customer Delight and Modern Companion. And guys, we want that list to be growing. I know that some of you guys are using Project Broadcast as well as Get Oiling, even though there's a redundancy there and you can be texting with us too. If there are providers that you're using for that, let them know that you'd like to have their content on Get Oiling. We are, we are absolutely open to work with anybody who's creating. oh, absolutely open to work with anybody, uh, who's creating great content for Young Living distributors. And to bring them over here, uh, to help you guys out. All right. So let's see, you can save multiple replies. Yes, Meg. Um, can you borrow my red personality? Um, I guess just stick around, uh, you know, stay close to the fire. You might turn red too. I think.
Just go back and watch all the YouTube replays, right?
Yeah. I temper my red to be fair. I know how yellow our crowd is. I, I, I keep a, keep a little my red. All right, Kathy, is there a list in Get Oil of all the content providers? It's on our homepage. On our homepage, just scroll down. Um, and, uh, yeah, and any of those, depending on who you use, have resource sharing bundles that you can click and import their stuff in even. So Martha Crecci isn't technically a Get Oil and Content Partner in the same way that our other partners are. Uh, for Go For Gold, but there are absolutely resource bundles inside of Go For Gold that we've created for use in that course. So, you know, we've got like a new member campaign that teaches the PSK and we've got, oh my gosh, for the 28 day challenge, we've got an entire like automated course vault for you. So, uh, that's all there. Yes. Good, uh, good oiling.com. Scroll to content partners. Uh, Diana says, just to be clear, the newsletter you spoke of is from while customer delight. Yes, but this also works for other content providers who have a, a monthly campaign, right? So a monthly themed campaign. I know for certain that while customer delight does this. I know for certain that Grow Workspace does this. I'm not sure about everyone else. Um, but if they have a monthly email campaign is what I'm talking about here, um, where people can opt in to receive that newsletter content. All right. Uh, if we have project broadcast, can we move the same phone number to get oiling? Yes. Just reach out to us. Is there a thieves campaign? I'm sure, I sure, I know our content providers have thieves campaigns.
I know Grow Workspace has one off the top of my head, but they all have a big library. So who knows?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, growth definitely does. They have a lot of product line specific content, which is great. Um, let's see, I love the affirmation campaign for Modern Companion. How would I create a landing page for that? Um, ooh, that's a great question. So a lot of what Modern Companion does is centered around text. So if you want to use her stuff or text, you just want to make sure if you're using a landing page, that you make the phone number required. So you just go to landing pages and you can use the one that, that you got today. Um, the, the one from this resource bundle and, um, and just rename it. Uh, so instead of it being a, um, you know, education newsletter campaign, it is an affirmation. So this is get my, get my weekly affirmations or something like that. Um, and then just make sure as Greg is showing here, that phone is checked as a required field, uh, so that it will actually send the texts.
Yeah. Text in keywords, you know, if you have two-way texting is another alternative to that. All of our campaigns, including the one that comes from Modern Companion or any of the content partners. When you're editing a campaign, there is a text in keyword option. Um, this will only show up if you have the two-way texting, which if you don't click chat, it'll help you activate that. Um, that's an extra charge, but it, um, gives you a lot. Under, yeah, you just put in a text in keyword and then people can, uh, text in whatever that keyword is to your number and then it'll automatically start the campaign. So that's an alternative to using a landing page, which might, is a little, possibly a little more mobile phone friendly.
Perfect. All right. Last call for questions, you guys. Great questions today. Um, really excited to, uh, hear how this is working for you. What you've learned today in your business. Does anybody know with while customer delight, uh, would the emails be sent to the same people that get the monthly email? Do they get both? So you, you get to decide who gets what. And if you are providing, um, permission-based gateways to receive information automatically, uh, they're deciding, right? Like, and, and you're giving them that option so that they could opt themselves in by email or text. Uh, and no, it's not the same content, uh, necessarily. Um, you know, so if we're talking right now about an affirmation campaign, they could receive that by opting into a landing page or a text in keyword and then receive that string of messages based on either the calendar as it's set up or based on the number, you know, whenever it was that they opted in. Um, and then with these monthly campaigns, which is what we're talking about, um, you know, this was something, this training today was very much centered around a whole bunch of folks who are using while customer delight that want to make sure that more of their people are getting that monthly email subscription. So, um, so that's what brought this up, but I know grow does that as well. And I'm not quite sure, um, about, about the other providers. But yeah, if they, if they get onto a thieves educational campaign, a new member campaign from inside Get Oil and then, you know, whatever the, the content provider campaign is that you're using, then they're now on three campaigns. They aren't necessarily going to sit, send at the same time. Um, you know, it really just depends on how it's set up. Okay. You guys are great. Thank you so much for all the questions. Um, yeah. So I guess that's it. We went over a bit today. Definitely grab your, uh, your resource bundle. It's got the downloadable uh, principal guide that you can use to follow along with and make sure you're clicking all the right things and filling all the right stuff out. Uh, and this should help you guys to be more effective in educating your members and to do this in a way that's really simple. I mean, the first couple of times it might take you a little bit longer. Uh, but all of the steps are there and you can go back and re-watch the, you know, basically 30 minutes of this video that explains it to you. So, um, really, really excited to see what you do with this. Um, what about one for email and one for product? Yes.
Sorry, the, the, the bundle link. Is that, did you share that already or is that going to come out in the replay?
Yeah, I've, I've shared it in the, in the chat a couple of times. Going to put it in there one more time, but it's going to be below the, the video replay.
Awesome.
Let's see. Um, Diana asked just a couple more questions. What about one email for a builder and a different one for a product? Yes, absolutely. Um, all, what you can do with campaigns is just basically create a little robot for yourself uh, to go and reach and teach how you would normally do one-on-one with one person at a time, but with people at scale, uh, based on when they get started. So, um, lots of different uses for this feature and, uh, recommend using all of them because they can save you a ton of time. All right. Thanks again, everybody. And, uh, definitely click that link to get access to this bundle and we will see you on the next weekly work session.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Thank you.